There.
Morning, public.
Right. All zero out there.
Thank you.
This is the class to stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public, public discussion. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated January twenty fourth.
I'll make the motion. Carter?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Handwritten claims.
Morning, Phil.
Looks like you can't see us there. Do you have anything for public or just the bylaws? Phil?
I think the public.
Okay. Just gonna double check.
Make motion to approve the handwritten claim.
I have a motion by Carter to approve the handwritten claims, your second.
I'll second.
Second.
Yes, that was me.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I'm carrying.
Didn't see a line anywhere. Wages.
Phil's side might pull back there.
Yeah, I believe that was that whole time.
Yeah, I wonder where he disappeared to.
He said there's no good place to sit up.
Thanks.
We could sit up here at the table.
Yeah, you, you can come up here. If you want to discuss with us, you can go up, up front, Sammy.
Phil, it's up to you EMS, we've went through it before, is there anything you added or changed since last?
I haven't changed the language, we had a brief conversation last week.
Yep.
Um, and then on the last page, the signature block was changed. To me, what, the way Todd wanted that, you know, I had to change it for media last week. I was article four under the membership.
Yeah.
Um, it was brought to the advisory council last week to remove the EMA position, have three at large seats instead of two at large seats. And then we did change it to a four-year term versus a six-year term, I don't remember if that was. I think that was approved prior to.
I think that was changed prior to it coming last week.
So I think the only change from last week is the composition of order from.
And the language that Todd had.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make, I'd make motion to approve.
I'll second, I'll second.
Second by Carter, any discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, please.
I.
What, what's your?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Derek?
Yeah. Yeah.
And this is what we're signing.
Yep. We don't need to sign it.
Anything else, Bill?
No. Let's figure out a little bit, I want to listen part on the.
Fair.
Yeah.
Not just the trailer, Ross, one, the GPS thing, Paul. Thank you.
Next thing, our agenda is discussion to purchase the emergency response trailer using ARPA funds up to fifty-five thousand dollars.
This is. He's asked.
You could be.
Okay.
We would need a motion to approve.
I think our, our, from, just based on our questions last week, do we know what, what the the cost would be to, to repair that trailer?
My recommendation is that, that trailer currently is owned by Cassup County.
Mm-hmm.
The new trailer needs to be owned by Cassup County as well, not EMA, right? Um, it's being how you own trailer, some kind of agreement, I mean, this trailer can be used countywide, so we just have to have a structure of how it's used. Um, my proposal moving forward be to approve up to fifty-five thousand because our up to the amount ARPA approved because it's kind of, the trailer is going to be county-owned, I'm going to come back to you guys anyway to get approval for purchasing. Uh, there is money in the EMA account to go towards this trailer, there is the money from the sale of the trailer, so we should be able to do it for way less than what it proposed amount is. You know, to buy the trailer, replace the trailer, um, I believe something needs to be done because when Dave was here, his pickup was always in town, now he's not, uh, it's a pain to try to get access to that truck, in a timely fashion. So that's, that's my proposal, my recommendation, let you guys, how you want to proceed or not proceed, we're not going to put any time, I got enough stuff going on, I'm not going to put any time into this, if you guys are in favor, so definitely forward.
Josh, you're on that board now.
You had the meeting.
That conversation actually did not come up, um, during that meeting, uh, she did not have anything on budget or anything like that during that time, so um, really don't have anything to add to that, um, but I wonder if the um, resolution can be kind of rewritten to not be strictly for EMA but be it for Cassup County.
It's not for EMA, it can't be because it's ARPA funds, ARPA can't.
I was thinking when I read it.
Well, they had it as EMA trailer last week.
It was, it was on, it's on the agenda.
Right, right.
The resolution says emergency response.
Oh, yep, I read that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
You know, last week with the, let's say, EMA trailer caused a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
In the county.
Yeah, I didn't call about that.
Yeah.
Oh, I did, I did have a conversation with the Cassup County EMS Association, which is the association that did the fundraising and stuff to buy the trailer originally, um, we did, I did have a conversation with them at the last meeting about, you know, either repairing this trailer or replacing this trailer, and they said, um, do whatever you think is best to bring it back to them, so they're in favor with whatever we do, they know that something needs to be done. So we did have a conversation with that board.
But we don't know the cost to repair.
Now, when we, when we called over, they get quotes on it, um.
You, you can't get quotes on repair because they don't know until they tear it apart.
We basically just hold deal with, it wasn't worth the effort of a repair, that you better off sell it, so we have to share it.
You don't know until you get digging into how bad it is.
So who would technically be in charge of the trailer at that point? It'd just be under Cassup County and then.
It'd just be part of our response assets, yeah.
Okay, so you'd basically kind of share it with EMA?
Law enforcement would use it for a command, so EMA could use it for whatever EMS fire.
But it would just be stored at the EMA building?
I think this is the only other question from last week was, is there anything else that we're looking at? As far as emergency services or services in the county in general? Being that we're using ARPA funds, is this, should, is this where we should be putting the money, or is there anything on the docket that also needs to be updated and replaced and um, what, what else is in the plans, or is there anything on the?
The other thing that was odd item would have been the fairgrounds. The grandstands. We turned that down, kind of, and they wanted money for the camping area.
Sure, but I would say an emergency response trailer would be more, a little bit more important for the county to appropriate that.
Let me say with the trailers, it does benefit all the communities at some point, or their departments at some point.
And, and I, I do agree with the new trailer for the fact that more vehicles can pull it versus, you know, Chris saying that hers is the only one that can pull it, especially means she doesn't live in the county.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, um, a, a few years ago, they, they passed a, a rule in Iowa that whenever there's a structured fire, EMS has to respond with all fire departments. We had to do what we have with the firemen that go in and out of the building. So we have a baseline set of vitals for those people, then we monitor their vitals if they're going out into their baseline vitals, so that's the idea, we had the trailer to get used for that, and unfortunately, we don't use a lot for that because by the time we get there, hook up to it and, and respond, it's too.
Mm-hmm.
I have resolution one thirty-one twenty-three oh one on the table. Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
Tammy, with the stuff we already have on the books and some of the ones that have gone over, are there any concerns about?
This was already because here.
I.
For forty-eight thousand, so that was already part of what we already had on hold, it will just be the, the difference between the fifty-five and the forty-eight and that's, and then we'll, we're looking at twenty-seven thousand that we still have in the pot, uh, so that if we have overages and extra shipping and that kind of stuff, so we're still, we're in the probably mid twenties is what we have left. That would be after.
And say, say, they go to buy a trailer and found one for forty thousand or forty-five thousand, you know, then that extra ten or fifteen would just come back and be used through our funds, okay, and that's something else.
And it'll still come back here to be approved.
Yeah.
As good as it is for the limit.
That's, just wanted to clarify that again.
I think being that there's no other propositions for use, I think it's a good use, um, I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA funds for emergency response trailer.
I have a motion, do I have a second for resolution oh one thirty-one twenty-three oh one?
Now, would just the sale of the other trailer have to be part of that or no?
No, this is just, this is just allocating the funds for the use of the trailer.
This would be for the resolution, but at the, at the end of the day, the sale of that trailer should be a factor in the total cost, so it does, but it doesn't.
Doesn't go into ARPA fund, it goes into the general funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for the sale of that trailer too, or no?
We don't have to yet because we haven't got the new one bought, and then at that time, we'll make the motions.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll come before you again.
Okay. I'll second.
Second by Josh? Any more discussion? Did you get it backwards? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Nah.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Third.
Yes. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I'm gonna stick around a little bit for that GPS thing.
Dan's here. Always walking. Hi, Dan.
Good morning.
Morning.
You're in the hot seat.
I'm in the hot seat, well, certainly COVID went off, I can hear a little heat.
Think we all could.
Bet you. Your regression wasn't able to make it in, so he couldn't find the letter.
Okay.
Uh, but this is a letter from my commissioners, reference the agenda item from uh, asking the board permission to see if we can increase our commission from three to five.
Um, next one.
Some of the, uh, some of the highlights that she decided there were basically the additional cost. And, uh, the commission feels that the benefits outweigh the costs by having additional two folks there, we've ran into situations before where we didn't have a forum, so we couldn't legitimately do a meeting because one is sick and maybe one's on vacation, so that's part of it. Uh, another synopsis within her letter, she talks about, we have, uh, the three commissioners that represent the Air Force. We would like to get some diversity in getting someone from the Army, the Navy, the Marine Corps, some other branches. And then, of course, the, uh, the other thing is, is to posture the department for future success by getting, uh, two additional commissioners and their new ideas and long-term being able to maintain the continuity of the department with veterans affairs and veteran-centric issues. Uh, I sent to you via email kind of a cost analysis on that, and basically the highlights if approved, uh, we would be talking about for the meetings portion, an increase of nine hundred dollars annually, and that's based upon the thirty-seven fifty per month for meeting with the commissioners. And then the mileage, I figured that based on a round trip of thirty-eight miles, I eat aircraft, that's just what I went with, but like if we were to get Sway City, uh, perhaps maybe even Titan area, Lakota, that could vary a wee bit. Uh, that, uh, total figure would be another thousand twenty-one dollars um, or an increase of five hundred and sixty-four dollars annually, so altogether uh, with just two additional commissioners, paying for the additional monthly meetings and their projected mileage, looking at about fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars, formalish. This would not include any additional monthly meetings that we might get together on, for example, like budget, budget planning, questions of that nature, and of course, the schooling aspect, which I could be state funds to cover that. But, uh, it would really be helpful, uh, I know the commissioners would really appreciate it, and subject to your thoughts or questions, that's really about what I have at this point, uh, it does vary throughout other sister counties, some have five, some have three. Uh, my personal thought on it is, you know, if we can get better representation with additional two commissioners to represent our veterans in the county, that's going to be better for the department. And that's really all I had, folks, for your consideration today.
When we were down at ISAC, and they talked about that quite a bit, um, and trying to move commissions to be five, five member commissions, so, um, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, with, with the issue of forum, I mean, three is just a challenge in general.
It is a challenge, the only thing that isn't reflected in there pending or subject to your approval is if it were to be approved, uh, there'd be some advertising costs in there to put out the announcements, of course, that whole selection.
That's, yeah, that's.
It's large, you know, but I didn't add those costs in.
Who, uh, determines who's going to be on the board, you or the board?
No, I have, no, that is strictly up to the commissioners, so if approved, I would go ahead and do the, the public announcements, and put it in the paper, and collect the applications. I would provide all of those to the commission, they would then make that selection, set up a time for an interview, and then make the recommendation as to who they would like to have appointed by the board, just know that if it were to be approved and we select two people, they cannot be consecutive terms. One would have to be two years, the other one would have to be three, and that's in accordance with the code. And that's to stagger that, so.
Two and three or two and four?
Uh, presently, the way the code read, two and three.
Okay.
Um, that could change because the code's under revision, I'm not sure exactly how they're addressing some of that at this point. But, uh, that purpose to stagger that would be so if the ten years up for one of the commissioners, you know, it's, it doesn't affect maybe the other one or the other three. So, so that's for your consideration.
Well, yeah, I mean, Carter already hit it, but it was discussed at ISAC a lot, I think it's a good idea, I would, I'd make motion to approve increasing from three to five.
Need a second. I'll second. Second by Lactor. Any discussion? Yep, first, uh, right now, you don't have it in your budget.
Well, I can adjust that because we're meeting this afternoon, and I could certainly do that.
Is this, and this is not something a supervisor needs to sit on, is two other veterans in the county or whoever?
Whatever, as the code calls for, yeah, or they have, uh, commissioners have to be a veteran.
Okay, yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. She carried.
Thank you very much, you know, appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep, thanks.
Cell phone reimbursement, I didn't nail it with that on the agenda.
You actually did it last December, you said after the first of the year to put it on the agenda, or to talk about equality because some departments were getting fully refunded, it's somewhere, they're getting partial, so we wanted to talk about it again.
Again.
What is the current state?
It's all over the board.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's not really a policy for the county as a whole, I think. Doug can maybe speak to this, but I think his, our fifteen bucks a month reimbursement.
You get fifteen back? Does that include foreman or they got phones?
Three phones for our office.
Phil, where are you at?
Cell phone?
Yeah.
I have a county one because I was told I couldn't have county stuff on my personal phone.
Yeah, so.
Five, two.
So what's the cost of it, do you know?
To me, the county went through.
No.
I want to say.
Cost to the county?
Oh, forty some dollars.
I want to say it's mid forties, forty-five ballpark.
Yeah, my, my surprise had been over like forty-two or three dollars a month.
Yeah, because they're, we get the phones for free, but they're generation old for government, uh, priced that way, so we pay for the service, but the phone doesn't cost anything.
At the sheriff's office, so what's your name? Yeah, Bailey, her phone is.
Well, it was like a hundred bucks a month, and now it's down to forty-five.
It is?
Yeah, the last claim, it was down to forty-five.
Todd, where are you?
I, I don't, um, have a county phone, um, I have my own personal phone, I don't get reimbursed for, but I do have two in my office now, um, I had three, but now only have two. Uh, how I work it is, uh, the county just pays the service, uh, any additional fees, prop, you know, as far as phone expense, whatever, then the, uh, employee pays the county for that, so it's just the service.
Do you know what those dollars come out to off the top of your head?
No. Ours is US cellular phone.
Well, I guess.
I, I, I'm just, for my two cents, I think it's probably a good policy to, to talk about because, you know, there's so many different ways of handling, it's been that way for quite some time, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I guess I'm up here just to find out where we're going from here.
I, I think we should cap it, um, with what our expense would be for a county phone, for a county phone, I mean, I can perfectly understand people who don't want to carry two, and I, I wouldn't want to carry two, but the taxpayer shouldn't be paying more than what an entire phone plan costs us, so, and that's kind of what I said to Roger Fisher when he was in here, and I think that's why that got changed, but.
I was told on my personal phone that it come out of the county email on my personal phone, because if there was ever anything that came out, my person would be confiscated. Why they told me to have two phones.
They can anyhow. Maybe.
I, I, I don't know about that.
Uh.
I came from Derek, so if you want further detail.
I mean, your, your county, Todd can maybe speak on this, but your county emails on personal phone would still be open records in that regard, just like they.
Yeah.
They would, so, but I don't know. Yes, I don't know why they'd need to confiscate your phone to get county email.
Well, because of what the, what, what's the, what the charge is, you know, what, what the issue is, but, uh, I, I mean, the county email is where the open records would be, I mean, you know, any, uh, any other personal things that you have on your, on your phone would not be something that would be reachable by the chapter twenty-two, uh, request for open records.
Yeah.
It's just.
How to use mine for ME, um, so those phones that they take are, are called my phone, and then.
But if it were, yeah, you know, there's a big difference between a county phone and a personal phone, you know, the the county phone is going to be subject to chapter twenty-two. But obviously, you've got protection for the, kind of, side effects, and that, they don't have, that's confidentiality.
Yeah.
What's this time, do you want to make a motion or a decision, or you want to do some more research in other departments? I know Donna's got two phones, there's probably a few people that got two phones, I have no idea what they're paying.
Are we just discussing county-owned phones, or people have their personal phones but want the reimbursement?
It's both.
Both.
Yeah, it's both. I, I don't know, I, I think it's a good policy to have and clear up some of the confusion on it, like it's been said, there's people doing it a lot of different ways, and I think we should set guidelines in that regard.
At the present time, is there anybody that's abusing it, I guess is my question.
I, I don't know if that's as big of an impact on whether we make a policy or not, I think it would lay the foundation for everyone to follow and not have questions in the future as well.
We can have policies for policies, but there's nobody abusing it, then why, why make a policy, I guess is my point.
Have there been complaints from departments on all the policies?
Well, like I said, we did have one that was close to a hundred, so, I mean.
The only one I ever seen on the bill was Bailey's, that was high-priced.
Yeah.
Who, who is in charge of cell phones? Your, your department has, okay.
Should you maybe, just my suggestion, uh, maybe approach a discussion, um, and determination, not necessarily today, because I think it would take a little bit more. Not necessarily today, because I think it would take a little bit more uh thought behind it, but. Maybe start with who should have them, or who should have, you know, the service provided.
We get, yeah, we gotta.
I think, I think some of that's outlined in the handbook, as far as who can have phones or who should have ones.
But we have a department head meeting, and when they're all sitting there, I think it'd be a good time just to ask them what their cell phone policy is in their departments.
Maybe that's the place to start. I mean, I think it's probably, I, I guess I have to, the handbook, that's what, what people call it, the handbook, so.
I mean, it addresses the use of.
The use of.
Personal electronic communications, you know, when it's supposed to be.
But I don't.
I don't think it's just who can have them.
Um, you know, and maybe that's the start.
Yeah, why, why don't we bring that up at the department head meeting, and then we can bring information back to the board, cuz I don't know.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, it's difficult for any one of us to know what everyone's doing.
You're correct. Set this back, let the record show, we acknowledge it, we'll put it on the agenda again when we have more information.
You guys good with just taking it to the department head meeting?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I was trying to see if there was, was anything in here? I, I don't, oh, here we go, I'll see.
There's cell phone usage in there, but not, not dollars.
Right, yeah, there's not, not a hundred percent, right?
It's more outlined use for cell phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next thing on the agenda is the policy for the five thousand dollar spending limit without board approval. It was brought up with the. Issues that Doug had in the road department. And whether it applies to everything in the road department or not. So I'm up for discussion.
I, I think it should apply for everything that's planned out. Um there was discussion about emergency repairs or whatever. There's requests that we need every sing, every single day of the week, but. I think that if there is emergency things that come up, I think we could have that. Be something that the chair and vice chair could make a joint decision on as the executive committee. On other boards I'm on, the executive committee is empowered to handle certain matters. That need a more timely response outside of um normal business in that regard, so I guess. My, my recommendation would be that the chair and vice chair jointly would make a. Approval on anything that's emergency in that regard.
What you're saying is Doug contact herself and Roger.
And, and.
If he has something that's over five thousand, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
For repair, repair wise, like i- if it's something that's in the middle of the week and, you know, let's say he has a truck go down, he has to. You know, replace something that's gonna cost over five thousand dollars, it's just a phone call, you know, not actually meeting at the board room.
Yeah, cuz you, you wouldn't have to have formally for two members.
No, but then if the.
Just get it like that's a.
Something that's been planned or something that could be considered planned, you know, if it's not in, in immediate need, the. You know, it can wait for a week or two, it should be brought before the board.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate.
I mean, I guess.
We've never in the past ever had the board approve road department purchases because he's had some budget paid by, quite a bit of it by. Gas tax dollars. There's always been exceptions made on that.
Is there, there's some exceptions that we could? Have in writing for Doug to be fair to him too, you know, as well as keep things accountable. You know, in both ways, it just.
That's, that was my idea with having the chair and vice chair prove it, because you still have. Um some board oversight, but also not have to have a, a board meeting every single day of the week.
So what has ever been purchased above five thousand dollars for the road department that never should have been purchased?
Or I guess, I think that's a different, but yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
Um but.
Not the point of.
I guess, Doug, how, how often, you, is it weekly that you have an expense repair over five thousand dollars? As far as, you know, just where it comes up in the middle of the week? I, I just.
We have a motor grader right now that is down, the engine is sitting outside of it, it's got a cam. That's uh being replaced, the engine's being put back together. I believe that bill will be five thousand dollars. I did ask for an estimate, we need to get the.
Right.
Equipment run.
Right. What do you think of the current policy?
There's not a policy.
Oh, there isn't a policy.
It's actually just the recommendation they go down every, it's just a motion.
It's not a policy.
So in writing, all it is is just an agreement between the engineer and the board. And it's not necessarily a.
It's all department heads.
Or, oh, yeah, it's all department, I'm sorry, all department heads.
Elected officials.
And you just, you have a, an agreement, not necessarily a policy, that this is how it has to be.
It's, it's always been called a policy, but it's not a formal.
Okay.
Document.
Are there any other department heads that?
Well, originally, my idea was that we had somebody that bought a printer that was expensive and didn't run it through the board, and they showed up.
That was.
That was the reason why we limited it to five thousand.
Oh, this, this was in place before that.
Yeah, well.
That, that was an issue that came up, but this was in place before that.
If you're gonna tie Doug's hands with having to get a hold of people to repair things, there's consequences.
Like what?
They're not gonna get done.
I don't think a phone call is that hard.
I don't carry my phone with me when I'm outside.
I don't carry my phone on me twenty-four seven either, but.
When there's decisions that have to be made on repairing stuff. I don't think it's fair. What, you're punishing your road department.
What do you think is fair, Roger?
Well, anything.
I mean, seeing that you put the, I just.
If, if, what is it gonna do? You've got a maintainer that's broke, needs a cam shaft.
Right.
Are we not gonna fix it?
Right.
I mean, it's, it's kinda goes, comes to that point. If we have a truck down, are we not gonna fix it?
So, that's one thing. Then we can put.
Yeah.
In the agreement that for necessary maintenance or repairs and that kinda stuff, aware that. He doesn't mess, he doesn't have to come to the board a week after, two weeks after, whatever we do with the claims to have that approved.
Right.
I, I can see, I can see why that would be a.
I would say we, you know, we could have a policy written, uh in, in the times of urgent repairs, you know, say midweek, you got a machine that goes down that. That you need repaired, you know, that, that doesn't require the board approval, but bring it to the board that next meeting to inform us that this is. A payment that is coming out. Now, if it's stuff that is planned, you know, something that you've talked about doing.
That's a little different.
Yeah, that, that's different. So, I mean, we could have a policy that says that. Any planned purchases that are gonna exceed five thousand dollars need to come before the board for approval. Excluding urgent repairs that need to be made to bring equipment back up to use.
And when you were talking, there you brought up a point, the, the reason this was talked about last was a fifteen thousand dollar repair on a truck. Now, I don't know how long it's at the shop, Roger, you'd said you'd seen it there for quite a while, and.
I think there's more than one that was out there.
And, and that's very possible, whatever.
Yeah.
But. I did not know about that piece of equipment being repaired until it showed up on the claims.
And your point is?
We should be informed of what's going on before the bill arrives at our desk.
So you're not gonna approve a repair?
I'm not saying we're not gonna approve it, we already approved it, we already paid it, I'm saying we should be aware of it.
What's purpose? Doug makes us aware of most repairs. I guess I'm going back to purpose. We, we have to function as a board, and he has to function. And take care of the road department that comes underneath his wheelhouse. But if we like it or not, there's things that come up that are gonna be more than five thousand dollars that need to be taken care of right away. I'm gonna say if the door falls out of the shed. And he needs to have a new door put in, it's more than five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so get it repaired, and then that next meeting come to us and say, hey, there was a repair that needed to happen, it's gonna be over five thousand dollars. Just so that way, when it comes to claim time, we're not going, wh- wh- what is this, this charge for? You know, we didn't know about this until the claims come out. You know, that's what we're trying to say is, is we're not looking to have to approve every repair that he needs done. But we don't wanna have a surprise come Tuesday morning of fifteen thousand dollar bill. You know, I'm.
Or thirty or fifty or whatever.
Yeah, it's just a little, you know, heads up on, on what's gonna be coming. And so, is the surprise.
And, and that's why I made the suggestion about the executive committee, so to speak, because that's how urgent matters are handled. On pretty much every other board I'm on.
Yeah, but there, I don't know of any county engineer that has those restrictions.
Do we know how other counties?
Yeah.
Handle their.
Yeah, I kinda know how Winnipeg does it. They don't have any restrictions, it's.
I mean, outside even. But, uh we gotta find a happy medium where Doug's hands are not tied to the point where. Where he can't function properly as the road department head, but also. I, I, I see where, if, yes, it would be, would be nice if we got a twenty-five thousand dollar bill to. To be aware of that, and it doesn't, and the bill doesn't come in the same day either.
No.
Exactly, there's, there's a time process there.
So, so what, what is the best motive acting to bridge that?
What I hear you saying is Doug comes in here every week, if he would just say, hey, next week you're gonna have a fifteen thousand dollar repair bill on a truck, or. Is that enough? Cuz I don't wanna make a policy, cuz it's, policies are written in stone, and then there's always something.
But I would say for the, for the power washer, that was very obviously a planned expense that took. Some sort of time and forethought, and that should have came to the boardroom for prior approval. And it did not, and that was also over five thousand.
That's your opinion.
That's my opinion based on the policy that's been passed unanimously the entire time I've been on the board.
It's not a policy, it's a recommendation.
It's, it says policy.
And, 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 yes, and in the future, those like projects should come before the board, I mean. That, that was not an emergency purchase, but we're talking about, how do we, that, that's, that's almost a different subject.
Well, we have to, we have to handle both situations within the same item.
Right, so it's either we, either we raise the spending limit, or. Or, or have, or, or, or have a department head bring something to the board prior to the expense coming in, that's how I see it. I don't know, is my wrong in thinking that?
Not every department's the same.
I know.
That, that's the problem. Roger Fisher, he has repairs on his pickups when they hit deers and everything else, and they don't come before the board.
So by, by doing this to the engineers department of, and not to the sheriff, it needs to be a. Universal policy.
I don't, I don't.
Across all the department heads, if, if we're gonna go with our.
Five thousand dollar repairs for deer.
No, but that's not to say that there is never going to be a repair expense from, right, the sheriff department or.
It should be here across the board.
It should be, yeah.
I, I think, you know, the, the idea should be, you know, what I stated earlier, that we have a written policy that says if there is anything that's planned. Or that could have been planned and is not urgent, should be brought before the board. If it is an urgent repair for machinery that needs to be repaired and, you know, brought back into use. Then he should be able to go ahead and do that, but notify us on that very next meeting. That there was a repair that cost over five thousand dollars, so we're not surprised when we get the claims.
So is that your recommendation? That your motion, recommendation, or why do you wanna make it?
I'll make that as a motion.
Yeah, I'll put it on the floor.
I was saying, signed.
Yes, yes. And this isn't directed just at the engineers department or the sheriff's department, cuz obviously there's other departments that could easily have a repair that goes over. Five thousand dollars.
Yeah, if you blow a motor up in that car, it's over five thousand.
Yes.
It, it always should have applied to everyone, I. And I would second that motion, whenever you get it written down there.
Does that seem fair, Doug, the?
I, I guess I'll wait to see what the policy reads, I'm assuming that somebody is going to write policy.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys approve a budget, don't you?
Yes.
And if people work within their budget, is it satisfactory?
That's kind of a hard question to answer, because.
If a person, if a department head works within their budget, it's not, or it is satisfactory. One of the two, it's not a difficult situation.
This isn't really a question about budget, this is a question about the policy.
Why do you need to see if you work within a budget, that's what I'm saying.
Doug, in, in the years I've been on the board, it's always been said that all your stuff's approved through the budget, yet. In our budget pages that I tried to look through quickly last night, I, there's, I mean. New equipment is one topic that obviously comes up in the boardroom. I didn't see a list of equipment that you're planning to buy now or anytime in the future, so if it's. If it's approved in the budget, we don't have specifics of that, it's a general direction, not a. Set in stone guarantee.
I, I think.
I, I guess we can talk about it today, when I do come in this with board about budget. I mean, there are. I have an idea of what equipment needs to be replaced, however. We've had situations where trucks have, roll trucks have been in collisions, they are totaled. All of a sudden, my budget for new equipment changes, the priority now is to get a truck. Instead of getting a motor grader, instead of getting that motor. It isn't a five-year program with construction projects, even a bridge may fail. And we have to go and we might have to change our program for construction. It, uh if you guys wanna have a policy, I guess we'll look at a policy, but again. If I work within budget. I, I will attempt to, to do a better job of letting you guys know what's going on. But. If I forget. Please accept my apology and my explanation. When you have ten million dollar budget, twelve million dollar budget. When you are providing a service. I try to provide a service to people, and try to do it inefficient.
Roger, a comfort question, we have. Roger, a comfort question, we have the motion and second on the floor.
Any more discussion?
Has there been a year where? Where the engineers budget or any other department heads budget has gone over to the point where it was concerning?
There's multiple times we've done budget amendments to.
Well, I understand that, but you know, that's voted on by the board, but. I I just hesitate to. Make it a policy set in stone. Or I. Just for simply bringing it up in the boardroom the following week, I I don't know, tha- tha- that's how I'm hearing the policy.
That's a motion.
Right, or the the most I mean, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, part of it, um.
The the main thing about it is is the five thousand dollar spending on unplanned items. And the policy should be written to exclude those, you know, emergency repairs, things that need to happen to get. Trucks back on the road, that is an exclusion to that policy, that's not written in the policy, the. You know, that he's limited to that, it's written in the policy that. You know, going to be written in the policy that he brings it to our attention when something like that does happen.
I see what you're saying Doug, but being that we don't have a policy that it's a recommendation, it wouldn't be an exclusion to a policy, it would be a policy in itself. You see what I'm saying?
But every other, every other department head has operated under the fact that this has been policy for. I I guess there, I would say there's been a couple issues we've had. But in those issues, we've referenced the fact that we've had this policy, even though it's only been a motion, it's always been. Reference as that's their authority, so if we're going to have this as a motion in the first meeting of the year. You either need to have a policy or you don't have a policy, so. My point with this would be, we've always considered that anything over five thousand needs to come to the boardroom for approval, so. In that regard, we should make it a formal policy if that's an issue, so that. That is clarified to everyone, because that's the way everything's been operating, when.
You're gonna have Phil's there is gonna have, how many ambulances you're gonna have in the Cusworth County? Six, you blow a motor, five thousand dollars doesn't cover it either, you're gonna wait for board just.
Oh, no, Roger, you're getting.
You're gonna wait for board approval?
No, no, because that is considered an urgent repair, and that is my exclusion.
You you have more ambulances, how urgent is it?
Is, does it take a piece of equipment off the road? Yes, then that would be considered urgent.
When when he's gonna go buy a new ambulance or when we upgrade, um. Software for the courthouse, are we gonna go without software for our computers? No, but it comes to the board, it gets approved, and we go about our normal business, it's. I I don't see why it's that big of an issue, everyone else for the vast majority of. Situations comes to the board for approval over five thousand dollars.
I I just one more thing. Are we jumping the gun by setting an exclusion to a policy to a policy we don't have in the motion? That's that's what I'm saying, like, is is can we even do that?
Yeah, because that would be included in the policy written as an exclusion, when you go through. You know, your handbook, do you think that all those policies are written in and then later on the exclusions are added? No, there's, when you write a policy, you can include the exclusions along with the policy, so it's already there in place. You can make changes to it after that fact, but. If you're gonna put a policy in, then he's gotta follow that policy immediately until we can add that exclusion. But if we put the policy in with that exclusion for the repairs. Then he can go about business normal.
So so for today's motion, it would be a direction on how to write the policy, we would still have to.
Approve the policy.
There would be no policy in place.
We we would have to actually approve it once it's written and drafted, but you would have direction on how to write it.
And this would not inhibit Doug or Phil's or anybody else's ability to. To just go ahead and and make those necessary repairs to equipment or.
Discuss that would be correct.
This this is just directing our conversation to write a policy.
Who's gonna write the policy?
Uh, that's what my next question was. So is this something we're having?
Is it something that needs to be in the handbook, or is it something that? Okay, so then who do we usually have write the policies for the handbook?
I'd like to visit with other counties and and get some more information on how we should properly go about it. Be before we move into the next stage of discussion and writing a policy, that's my feeling on it.
Do I have a motion to second on the floor? No.
Yes.
Yes.
No, motion died.
So what would, what would you be looking for from other counties?
Just how they go about. I know other counties with their engineer department and and other departments function differently than we do, I'd like to. I'd like to discuss some things with them and just see what works well in other counties that are working well, um, and looking at the handbook and what we have and. I I just hesitate to make decisions before.
So so how would you expect people to handle?
We we the motion failed, if you wanna bring it up again, we should put it on the agenda, we should actually follow Robert's rules of order.
Well, how are how are department heads supposed to handle business now? That's fine, but is there a five thousand dollar policy or not? Because it's been.
It ain't a policy, it was a recommendation.
That's both answers to the same question.
No, it's the way it's been done.
This didn't take away the original.
Af- after it died, we we aren't gonna discuss it more, we are gonna follow. Next thing on agenda is relocating the owls. Kyle, you put that on the agenda?
Yeah, um, I guess Rod had said it in the boardroom here. The last, I don't know if it was two weeks ago, whatever, but others have come to me saying the county recording is very hard to hear. Board members and, I mean, there's been multiple occasions where we've had issues with them being paired. If you go between the line between them with. Your hands or papers or whatever, it interrupts the connection that way, and I I think they should be relocated up to the board table for. Better, um. Quality of the product of the video is what I would say.
Then are you gonna pick up to people in the background talking?
No, but not as not as clearly as you would now, but. Anyone that's addressing the board, I feel should be actually coming up and addressing the board, you shouldn't be talking from the back row.
Did you talk to Derek yet for what he thought could be done to improve it?
Yeah. You want him in here now or?
Here, she's like, I'm moving where they are now.
Those two owls moving them up here to.
That's right, he's he's in Iowa City.
Des Moines or anything or whatever, yeah, um.
But we're talking moving those two owls up here so that way that the recordings are a lot clearer and they can hear us.
And and at the end of the day.
On the video, like when you live stream in.
For when you do, uh, when they post their recordings. And you go to YouTube and watch them, people are complaining that it were were hard to hear up here. Because the owls are so far away from us, now if the owls are brought up here to the table.
Those are separate, those are for the audio recording, they're not tied in with the owls.
Okay, okay.
So there's there's two sets of microphones, there's one for the phone here, and then there's or there's. Those are phone, the other four are the audio recording on the.
The owls have built-in microphones. Which is why, you know, if they're so far away from us and then we're turning and talking to each other like this, the microphones.
This one's picking us up though too.
Yeah, so this does, mine does. Better because it's closer and that's kind of the point of moving the county ones up to the board.
You're saying if I turn and say something with the jacket, it's hard to pick up.
Well, mine would pick it up better than the county ones. Because of the distance.
They don't hear, they just hear the ones out there.
Two separate videos.
Okay.
Yeah, so those two are paired together, this one is independent.
I see what you're saying, I guess, yeah, when I logged into Teams for the meeting at one time. I could only see up here, I couldn't see out there, right, so that's two, I didn't realize they were two different. Yeah, deals, okay.
And. The pairing between them gives the ability to get around the pole, like. That's a shortcoming of mine, anything that's directly behind that pole, you cannot see.
Correct.
Those two gives the ability to grab from either direction, but. At the end of the day, the majority is ran off one, but. I guess that's.
Can you set one owl on that side?
No, they have to be.
You, I think you have to be eight foot. Six, six to eight, I believe. Okay, well, yeah, they have to be direct line of sight and then there's a distance requirement for them to be able to pair.
I mean, I guess for the public's sake, if you're watching a recording. People are more concerned about. What somebody's. Visiting back and forth in the audience.
Well, I'll make the motion that we have the owls moved up to the. Board desk. Um, and that we'll have Derek work on that.
And you'd still be able to see the room from corners.
The only, the only downfall to it is if someone's in the back of the room and they're talking, you won't hear them as clearly, but they're. They're not voted on by the public, unless it's another elected official, obviously, but they. They can come up and address the board from the middle table.
If it doesn't work, we can change it.
I have a motion on the floor to move the owls to the front desk. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion carried to eighty-one. Discussion GPS devices on county-owned equipment. The only county-owned equipment is the road department, correct?
Hmm, currently, the road department has GPS and, um, this. Was discussed between some conversations I had with other supervisors, I SAC as well, but I didn't. Put it on the agenda last week right away, but I did have a conversation with Phil about it and. He was supportive of it in and said that they are currently using a. Application right now to track, try and track ambulances and stuff.
Should we have Bill?
That was my three sixteen is what we used.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Which isn't supporting what we're trying to do anymore.
Oh, I guess, yeah, in that, and one of my other points with this, I guess, we. We made the decision to do GPS on the secondary road stuff, but. Which is a majority of the vehicles and equipment in the county. And I just think it should be standard across everything, I don't think there should be stuff that's included or not included, I just think it should be. Countywide as a whole.
So would that include the assessor's vehicle?
Ev- everything would be my recommendation, so it's so it's fair for for so it's fair for everybody. And and it's not like. It's not like this is trying to critique someone for driving fifty-six or sixty-one, that's. That's not the point of it by any means, um, it can actually be used as a defense if. Things are be being done correctly, there's been complaints where. A road grader hasn't been down my road in a week or whatever, and this gives us the ability to to look up that data. Find out if they were down there two days ago and a rain event came and then semis went down. Might not look like it was just maintained, but it can actually be used to. Verify that we're doing the right thing in situations, so it's.
Where does this information be sent to then?
Well, and that's a conversation I had with Doug, I had asked for. The way to access it and login information and stuff and. He was hesitant to set up an account for board members unless it was directed by the board as a whole, so.
He he would be correct in that.
Why is that?
Cause it's a board decision. It's not just one person's decision that they wanna track something, that's will be up to the board.
Well, no, the board made the decision to track it, it's the information behind it and viewing it at this point as well. But. I don't know if anyone has any questions or whatnot, but let's.
Is this something that we would increase to, um. Be used in the ambulances and potentially the sheriff vehicles? But they're not tied to.
Sheriff already has. Software for all their stuff and and that would be the one exclusion I would recommend because of their. Line of work and the fact that they are already, they already do have GPS and stuff in their vehicles, the dispatch can see where they're at, so.
And then that's very confidential too. Where where our road grader is a little different than what the deputy's up to. But.
Yeah, so that would. My recommendation would be to have GP and we could probably add it to the handbook. But to have GPS devices on all county-owned vehicles except the sheriff's office. And to also set up accounts for. Board members to be able to view the information.
So like on the air, but it's a lot of that stuff's called under HIPAA as far as privacy. My biggest issue so of GPS is is trying to track my vehicles when they're all. Out of county on transfers and full night, train, storm storms and that kind of stuff. But if we're running local number one calls, I we'd have to make sure that we're not violating HIPAA rules to be.
I.
Allowing people to track them vehicles.
Bring it to, I mean, I I don't, if you have a question, you can ask, but I'm not sure. I'm taking it to an individual's house, I mean, and it's.
You do, okay.
Why would you have a potential HIPAA violation on the location of a vehicle that wouldn't have any patient data? You wouldn't know who's in there or anything.
You'd know where it went.
Well, the call goes out over the radio, the address that you're going to anyways, the radio.
I'm not saying it is or isn't, it's just something we have to.
Yeah, yeah.
A person outside of that particular field like Donna, you know, before, say, I come to Donna and say, hey. Can I have your information to, you know, so I can see if I want to. Where she is at, I I don't know if I'd be comfortable with that, you know, just just from the standpoint of privacy, I see what you're saying. You know.
I'm frightened of having access if there's a concern.
Right, right.
No, we're not talking like making this public access or anything. Access or anything where anybody can see it. It's, I mean, this could be for limited eyes.
It's public access if you have it.
Why?
Cuz you're the public.
No, we're.
I think.
But I don't think your job description says to track every county vehicle.
No, but if we have questions, we should be able to have access.
I, I think you're overstepping your position as county supervisor by thinking that you can track every vehicle that the county owns.
Well, as, as a supervisor. We oversee. Budgets and, and, and all departments of the county within the county. So if we have a concern, we should be able to go to a department head and say. Hey, here's my concern. Can we look into this? And even do it together, you know, you don't, you don't have to do it from.
But that's different than, that's different than what you're proposing to.
Why do I propose that?
That Kyle's proposing. But I agree with you.
I've. But, but we should, you know, when in going to a department head. We shouldn't be. Denied access unless it's. Based on. You know, violation of privacy or HIPAA or, or something. Of course, that would be an issue.
Right.
But. Being that we are kind of a. Between the five of us, we are the employers. In, in a way of Cassous County. Uh, outside of the other elected officials. You know, that. We do have a right to be concerned if, if there is a concern that comes up. So, I agree with that.
So how would you describe that in a motion? That.
Yeah.
That board members are able to view information.
As long as it would not.
Well, yeah.
But I think that has to be looked into first.
You're gonna have to go through Doug anyhow cuz it disseminates in his office.
All of the GPS? Even for other county, oh, but we don't have any on other counties. So, so say we put GPS on the assessor's car. Yeah, who?
She, she should be overseeing.
She has oversight over that.
Phil would be. Separate that way.
That would not all be in Doug's office.
Okay, shouldn't.
Right.
Then that might be a budget item I need to know before we set a budget to.
Because that would come as an expense to her department.
Yeah.
Yep, right. It'd cost money.
How much is that? Or do we know?
I don't know.
Um. For the secondary road stuff, I wanna say it's about fifteen hundred bucks a month, but I don't. Know exactly how many devices.
For all of the vehicles?
That's for everything, yeah.
Is that accurate?
What's your definition of a fee if only being one question I have? We asked fifteen. I'll approach the board so everyone can hear me.
Thanks.
Yes, fifteen hundred dollars a month is what our. GPS uh, bill is, but. I do wonder what you are calling a vehicle, because every. Every piece of equipment that the Cassous County Secondary Road Department has does not have any GPS on it.
What does have GPS?
Motor graders, dump trucks, pickups. And mowers.
I guess maybe what I should ask is what does not?
Dozers, loaders. Scrapers. Mobile tractors. We, we have a lot of pieces of equipment that we do not track.
It's fifteen hundred a month. How much does that break down to a vehicle?
Uh, I was curious, yeah.
I wanna s. Probably fifteen, fifty, twenty bucks. A unit per month, probably.
Fifteen to twenty dollars a unit per month?
One vehicle, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot higher than.
Right.
Breakdown of. Whatever eighty vehicles into. One application, whatever it is.
Who do we purchase that through?
That's. And I, I don't know if there is a big discount on units that way, not sure. Don't. I think it's, I think it's a per-unit fee.
I, I have no idea.
Maybe before approving.
We look and.
Look into what that cost is and whether. I, I, I'm just throwing that out there. Or let her say for, and. Of course, we're talking budgets today, but.
Why don't we uh? Do a little more research on that and bring it back when we know more.
If we're talking fifteen to twenty dollars a month, that's not a big expense.
No. And we already have it on. The majority of the. Units.
Right.
In the county.
Uh, the, the, cuz the. Maintenance have vehicle too.
We, we've got department heads sitting, sitting in here wasting their time, so I have to. Better have a discussion on the county handbook. Kyle, you put it on, what's your?
Well, I guess I'll. Withdraw my motion that was on the floor, but.
He did have a motion.
Yeah.
We didn't watch second. Nope. So it's withdrawn.
Um. I guess I didn't. I kinda said last time I didn't have a specific thing on the handbook. I thought it'd be good to. Go over and discuss for the two that are new, could highlight some things. Um. There was quite a bit of discussion in the last year or so. Um, converting to PTO instead of vacation sick leave. So, if you guys have any thoughts on that, that was a big topic. Um. Tammy had some notes in hers that I had looked over a little bit last night.
We set up the, a committee what a year ago. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Donna, Karen, me, Roger. To go through the handbook and update anything that wasn't in it, like the update to our meeting mileage and make any corrections. Cuz it hasn't been updated since two thousand seventeen. So we have been working on that for a, a year, probably, at least.
When we started working, I think I stayed on made of the PTO cuz.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
The, and the benefits vary from department to department somewhat, yeah. From the road department to the sheriffs, or do, we haven't got them all the same yet.
Benefits in.
Uh, uh, time law.
Vacation time, PTO, all of that works.
Yeah, and agreement. We haven't had that standardized yet.
Yeah, so I mean, my point of putting it on the agenda was just to visit about it and kinda highlight a few things that way, but. Do we have any idea on? When we'll, like, is there plans to do a revision or did it just stop with the BTO?
We're working on it. You're, you're kind of revamping the committee, um, Donna and I talked about it a little bit, um, so that we have maybe more departments involved.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we asked Melissa since she does payroll, um, for her to be on it, so. She can look at anything that might not be correct. And then we thought about having somebody from the sheriff's office, somebody from the county attorney's office. Am I missing anybody? And then maybe restarting looking at it again, uh, since PTO isn't going any further.
Is PTO gonna be revisited?
We.
It's up to the board and that was.
We kinda, well, after all the turmoil out of one board meeting, everybody being upset with it, we decided not to, but. I think after that, we decided that uh, we'd have to do a better education with the people. Explaining PTO time. Um. It's a lot simpler to administer. Everybody that's been under PTO time seems to like it, but. There were people that were afraid they were losing something.
Yeah.
I think PTO could be revisited, but like Roger was saying, education, you know. Get the education to the employees and, and. Discuss with them, you know, benefits of PTO. Over what's currently in, in place and. And. Then once, once that education's been brought forth and kinda get the opinions from people, we can revisit it on the board.
Well, I guess the problem was is everybody wants to be a winner.
Right, right.
You're gonna have winners and losers when you switch. I mean, that's just. Plain fact, and not everybody's going to have what they consider a win if you switch to PTO time.
Right.
That's hard for people.
Right, and, and some people just won't understand cuz they, you know, they've worked here for several years under. The current system and making a change, it's, you know, confusing and, and. Can be a little alarming to some people, but I think the education just needs to be brought to the employees and. And discuss with them before we can make an actual decision on it, but. I would say we could revisit it.
Think there's departments that have comp time and there's departments where people don't accumulate comp. So, PTO would really favor somebody that doesn't accumulate. Comp time. People that have comp time felt that it wasn't necessary because we take off when we want to cuz we have comp hours. So we're gonna have to address that.
Who would not have comp time?
I don't think.
The deputies and stuff.
No, they don't.
Anybody that would be, it makes sense. I don't.
You don't, you don't have much. Yeah, but do, do your employees, they don't have comp time much, do they?
Oh, they're very minimal.
Yeah. Nick, your employees don't generate a lot of comp time.
A lot.
No. And yours don't either. I mean, it's not like the deputies that. Can't accumulate a whole bunch of comp time or the janitors, so. That's where the PTO time. Kinda stalled out. Any suggestions? In, in the handbook, yeah, it should be. If you get it. Some way together and. Look at it. It'd be nice if we had everything. The same, but it's not.
That's probably what was the stance.
Yeah.
Keeping it similar would be.
Well, then.
Suggestion too, cuz I don't know that. Things are in there, but we don't always, I mean, and I'm not bringing up, but we have to look at it and then see how it fits.
Yeah, well, we have too much in it. Instead of not enough. Yeah. And it makes it difficult because some of them are on twenty-eight day rotation and some are on long flights. It. Makes it tough to get it. So it's the same for everyone.
Pretty good at the same variables that you have.
Yeah.
Sheriff's Department that works twenty-four hour shifts, you're gonna have MS coming on that works twenty-four hour shifts.
Yeah, you got.
This, many variables, there're gonna be sections in there that's gonna pertain to different departments.
Right.
There ha, there has to be.
Yeah, you got the, the jailers that work seven on and seven off and.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we'll ever get it all uniform, but I think it would be good to get an updated version of it. Sometime, there, even if we don't. Even if we don't have PTO incorporated in there, it'd be good to get a.
And, and if we're gonna revise it, I think we should revisit the PTO and have that. Included, you know, in.
We can, but that's gonna be a longer conversation. It's not gonna be a. A board meeting or two, so that, that gets into, how long do you wait to get a revision of the handbook? I mean. Do you wanna play it off another year or two?
No, but. I don't know what, what you're gonna change a lot in the handbook unless you do change to PTO time.
Tammy's.
There's several things.
On the, on the committee, would that be something that you guys would be able to? Discuss and getting education to the employees and stuff like that on the, on the PTO? I mean, would that be?
Tio is a lot of work, you know, it's, it's a lot of time put into it. Does it kinda put in a lot of, lot of time? So I don't know, you mean? Getting information on what we've already come up with? Is that what you mean or?
Getting information to the employees to kinda. Educate them on what it would mean for them.
Donna and Doug did most of that work, so that would be up to them, whether they're comfortable with that.
We also needed information from you on what your expectations were, the data. And the. Skeleton of a policy, the draft. Talked about for months.
Yeah.
But then, then it's also the trickle-down of how your. Now, we got your employees, which obviously we go into play. How there's payroll interest, I mean, there's a lot of adjustment.
Yeah, so that's where that's, that's a pretty big topic, so.
So. What would you guys suggest? You know, doing the revision of the handbook? Now and then going back and revisiting PTO or?
I think you better look at the handbook. See what you can. Improve on it. I don't think there's a lot of revision. But PTO, that's, that's gonna be a big hurdle.
Yeah, I, I kinda would like to see them separate in that regard because otherwise you start having a lot of irons in the fire and then. Can't get anything accomplished, which is kinda where we stay on it. The PTO didn't move forward, so then now all of a sudden we don't have revisions to the handbook and it's not. Updated, so.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good to get that current and then come back to PTO.
I guess my thought process was if we were gonna do a revision, let's try to do it all at once, but yeah, there's gonna be too much on the PTO, then let's just do the revision first and then do the. PTO another time.
That is what started.
Yeah.
Because of PTO, but.
Yeah.
At the weekend finish what we started with the handbook and then. Look at PTO.
When you and Donna are bored, why don't you? Look at the handbook.
Well, we, we have a committee, um, so we can go forward with that, I guess, and finish what we started.
There's nothing that's gonna get done next week.
Yeah.
No, and I, and I wouldn't expect it next week either. I just think it's good to get the ball rolling again.
Okay. We are up to. Prove the IA fifteen detour agreement with the Iowa DOT, Doug.
Yes, um, last year. The Iowa Department of Transportation and the, uh. Yeah, me, I think it's up to railroads against Canadian Pacific, um. They asked for and received permission from the board supervisors to, uh. Use a detour project. They're planning on replacing. Uh, railroad crossing on Highway fifteen. Uh, right to the west of Woodmore. There is a location map in your folder. Uh, they would be using. Uh, two hundred and ten street. Between the west city limits of Woodmore and Highway fifteen, and then also P ten. Which is a paved route from the north city limits of. Woodmore to Highway eighteen for a detour there. So they're asking really to renew this. What happens is, this. They think it's gonna take about a week to complete. Uh, they do have traffic counts, truck counts. And they do reimburse, uh, Cassous County as well as the city of Woodmore. For the trucks and tra, uh, cars that do, uh, end up, uh, using this route. I would recommend it to board to go ahead and.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Iowa DOT?
I'll make the motion.
That was Rocker?
No, that was. And I'll second.
Since you already said my name, I mean.
Yep. We have a motion on second on the floor. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, motion carried unanimously.
Signature right there, please. Thank you. Right on, buck up here.
Thanks, Doug.
Construction in the right away.
There are no requests for construction in the road right away.
Anything else?
Uh, discussion points. Uh, construction, the bridge at Irvington, we did, uh, open that up to traffic. Uh, we. Contractor placed some impact. Uh, barriers and. Contractor placed some impact, uh, barriers in front of the approach barrier rail. So if there would be a, a vehicle that needs control. Uh, it would be the right side, it is protected, we still have a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit there. It's still under construction technically, but the road is open, uh, this will allow people to use it. Guard rail still needs to be, uh, constructed, but we'll wait for weather to, uh. Allow that construction. We still have an open position at the mechanic shop, um, at my advertising cylinder pit, farmland. Uh, those bids are due to my office on Friday at four and I'll open them up at the next board meeting. My equipment, we, all our mower tractors, we took those to Casey Nielsen, uh. Number six one six had some, uh, oil leaks and fuel leaks and they are. Take care of those, six one seven, there was a fuel tank leak and a transmission filter housing majorly. That they are repairing and that six twenty-one transmission, uh, D range clutch packs were. Uh, were removed, so the transmission was taken all apart on that. Uh, motor grader one forty-eight, the cam is out, uh, Ziegler is replay, is repairing that. And then we still have three motor graders, six truck chassis and two semi tractors that are on order that we have not purchased yet.
Did you give you any reason why they thought the cam went out, or just normal wear?
Well, they're, one of the. One of the, uh. They call it a roller, but I call it a lifter.
Yeah.
Um, it started wearing on that cam and wore about a quarter of an inch around that. And I don't know if it got soft, wasn't hard, but that, they said that that was what caused that, where the, between cam and that lifter.
It was, it was a valve then?
No, there's a.
Was it injector lifter?
Well, it's a roller and it all operates. The roll, what they call roller is a cylinder about an inch in diameter by about three inches high. Uh, and. That, there was something in there that between the cam and that piece, there was wear and it was causing noise. That is all I have for the. Road department, uh, zoning, I am getting a meeting. Um, organized with the Planning and Zoning Commission to, uh. Have a hearing with that CO2 ordinance, I started visiting a little bit with them, I'm waiting for. Uh, Tim Whipple to reply and two other, uh. Commission members, and then we'll start advertising it, yeah, I think it's going to be. I guess what I'm proposing is February twenty-seventh. We still need two members for planning zoning commission.
Did that guy ever get ahold of you?
I guess I talked to Steve, but about a different situation, it was nothing about. Uh, that, I mean, it's the board supervisor's responsibility to fill these positions.
Right.
And board of adjustment, we need one person for that.
He, he just wanna know the time requirements, how often do you meet them? Or does it just?
Does he have to call me? It, it all depends.
Right, right.
Haven't met for.
I told him to talk to you.
So, I, he hasn't called me.
Okay.
The longest, I'm sure, I called him about different.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
Nothing else, Doug? Take a ten minute break.
Doug, for the John Deere tractors, are they. Holding up to your expectations, I guess, with these repairs that are necessary with the transmission and all that?
We would, if we had another employee in our. Canit shop, we'd probably be doing them ourselves, but since we do not have. That employee and haven't had that applied for two years, that's some, one of the reasons this has happened. So yes, John Deere tractors are. Meeting my, what I consider my expectations.
Yeah, that was, that was my question.
Anything else? Let's take a ten minutes break. Thanks, Doug.
Yeah, I'll just leave it.
Lighting.
Yeah. Never even filled up my water for the meeting today.
Be careful.
And, uh. Watch out if I fall over from dehydration.
We just had that happen at our office yesterday.
Oh.
When we fell over from dehydration.
Yeah.
Passed out.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. Goes for reminding, you still need to drink water in the winter, even if you're not sweating.
What?
Yeah.
That is true.
Need to get the blood back to my toes. Ready for it to warm up outside.
It's Iowa, it's raining, it's what it's supposed to be.
Do you want these turned in on like a. Monthly basis or just kinda anytime?
Morning. Well. This morning, yeah.
What are you gonna talk about today, one twenty-nine?
Yeah, Kyle, just quick, I, I hadn't actually even planned to be here, Kyle, just sent a, a text asking if I. Had availability to, uh, stop up and discuss that, uh. We had some correspondence with. The Minnesota Drainage Authority.
Mm-hmm.
On it. Uh. Kinda discussing what they thought the best path forward was, so.
Well, if they're gonna appoint viewers and do everything that they always do.
Well, that was, their, their process, which is quite extensive.
Yes.
Was discussed, um. And actually. From what I gathered, and we'll discuss this for with everybody, they're not even. They're not even to the point of, the, the question was raised if a petition, action in Iowa. Was enough to spark. Motion in Minnesota, or if they needed to actually get a formal petition. From a Minnesota landowner before they could, before they could act on it. The Drainage Authority has actually put together a pretty, uh.
In Minnesota?
In Minnesota, they had put together a pretty. Extensive as far as like, just for county work, uh, an actual report of the issues.
Whether they, they go on and say it needing to be repaired.
Oh, yeah, they've got, uh, this was included in the petition, uh, I think it got bundled with the, the Iowa petition. But they had actual.
Uh, so then they have sent a viewer out to look at it.
They, I mean, they've, they have, uh, maps of the areas, they have, uh. Shots on different damages, they've got profiles in here of what they're. Considering to do, they've got tile capacities, uh, all the way up to. A, an actual cost estimate.
They do?
Yeah.
That's just the Minnesota side.
That's just.
Four hundred fifteen, so what are they gonna do to get cover up?
That, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to investigate.
They're gonna have to move the ladder.
I mean, it's, right, it's gonna have to be, I don't know if it's gonna go down a lot, I think you're gonna have to get out of that load.
Right.
So they.
We looked at it once before.
I, right, well, and I'm, I've got the blue report from two thousand and twelve as kind of a basis. But, yeah, just from their, just from their county staff, they've put that report together.
Did they even look at McCall's report?
They did, I think they utilized it as a. As kind of a basis for those, uh, tile capacities, maybe a little bit for the cost estimate, that was. Something they seemed less confident about, because they don't, they don't have a lot of great recent.
Mm-hmm.
Pipe costs, um. But we'll, uh.
Ultimately, looked at it, you know, and it was hard to even get it moved anywhere to keep covered.
Right, yeah, it's.
Cause we said open dips.
Like you say, it's a, it's a toe kicker, that's not, there's no joke there, I mean, it's. It's my, they, it's purposely mounted over the top of it, but Minnesota is recognizing that it's.
Substation.
It right.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, Martin.
Howdy.
So?
Yeah. Is it warm enough out there at all?
No, 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 it's, uh, it's the type of days that guys like you and I, the breath starts freezing up.
Beard sickles.
Yeah, it's one of those days.
Okay. Okay, one twenty-nine, landowner meeting.
So I texted Tyler to see if he was available, come over just for extra information if anyone had any questions, but. Um, Marge has gotten the notice that Minnesota is sending out to their landowners. Tyler and I had a conversation with the staff in Minnesota and Fairbowl County. Oh, to, to. I was gonna bring it up in board discussion last week and then I forgot about it, so, uh, that's. I was gonna bring it up in board discussion last week and then I forgot about it, so uh, that's why they put it on the agenda today, so I don't forget about it.
That would have been last Monday, right?
Last, yeah, last Monday, um, had a team's meeting with them, very impromptu, scheduled it like that morning. Um, had very good conversation, I would say, um, but, long story short, one of the things we talked about was timeline in the process and kind of expectations from both sides, and I kind of hit that a little bit when we were talking about hiring an engineer, but there's very different processes across the border, and one of, which we did it on six G sub four, but um they had talked about potentially doing an informational meeting for the landowners, just to, not like a formal hearing like we typically do, but just to get everyone in the same room and have an opportunity to talk about the situation at hand without going into a ton of expense and a ton of details in that regard, but the um, Fairville County, the Minnesota side, they are going to have their attorney in their county at that day, and initially they did not think he'd be able to make it after we had talked about scheduling this, and then I believe they sent another email thinking that he might be able to now. So there's a potential that their attorney will be able to be there to try and bridge the gap between Minnesota and Iowa and works through some of the legalities that way, but timeline wise, they said it would probably be two to three years at least for a project on their side by the time we jump through all of it.
That, what they said was typical on their side, one of the first things, one of the reasons they had brought up having an informational meeting is that uh, there's not a lot of precedent for how to conduct a joint district between the two states. And one of the biggest questions that they had was whether or not a petition on the Iowa side was enough to facilitate and constitute a petition for their board to act upon. Uh, that was one of the big questions they were gonna have for the attorney.
And and there's, there's substantial questions about that because of whether we do a repair project or an improvement project, and those are very different processes on their side, and the like effort or time and all that required for it.
Right, it's like, what if it's for an improvement, they said it was, if it was over a quarter of their landowners, they need to petition for it. Then twenty-six percent of their landowners have to petition for it, but there's not.
Then it go, it goes through D N R stuff, there's a cost benefit thing, but
Right.
If, if they kind of check the boxes and all those different criteria, there's really nothing that stops it on their side.
How big is the drainage district, so?
That was another thing that was discussed because there's recently there was set up, uh, there, for the open ditch that this drains into, there is an agreement for essentially outlet fees for how that's paid for via the Iowa side. Uh, however, this tile itself was not addressed when that was
They.
When that was set up, so we would know within reason from the assessment schedule on the Iowa side, what was served, but they had said it was, the 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 terms they had used were there were visible holes in the agreement that was set up that is serving these districts.
Well, their assessment schedule has nothing to do with benefit.
Wait, right, yeah.
So, I mean, you gotta realize that, there's people that are gonna be at this meeting that are gonna go, no, we're not gonna do it, because it has nothing to do with benefit.
Well, yeah.
I think, I don't, I don't know if it has nothing to do with benefit, but it has, it has a different formula.
There, there, it's, it, right, it's all based off of the the viewers and how they.
Yeah.
How big is the area, and everybody in the area gets taxed the same, no matter what the benefit is.
Right, um, and so, uh, one of the things additionally we had discussed was they had not received any formal petition, but included, and I think this was in your board packets a couple of weeks ago, when we discussed
Yeah.
when, when the appointment of engineers came up, but they had, the Drainage Authority in uh, Fairville County had put together an actual, it wasn't a petition, but they recognized the issue, and they've actually this is from there, just the county's drainage department, they had photos of of damaged sections.
And and that's what I was referring to, and I said there's significant differences in this, like capabilities.
And and managed uh profiles.
Capacity and.
Capacities and cost estimates that they want to get the Minnesota landowners, as well as the Iowa landowners, together to discuss how, how jointly it moves together.
Yeah, and and the the purpose for this meeting upfront is more so to get feedback from everyone as far as what they're interested in, what they're willing to pursue, that type of stuff, and that more so goes back to the repair or improvement, because that's two very different processes on their side, so we need to um, get feedback from the landowners as far as what they're interested or willing to do, but when we appointed the engineers, you guys would have been able to see the email and comments on the petitions, so I've, I've relayed that to them and um, it's, it's actually going to be a fairly informal hearing, so it, or informal meeting, so it's on the agenda for setting a date and time, but it's, it's up to you guys if you'd like to attend or not. They said on the Minnesota side, they're only gonna have one of their commissioners, the one that actually represents that area, so they'll only have one there. Um, they're not going to have the full board, or their full commission, so it's up to you guys, but for Marge to send out the notices and all that stuff, babe, it would be good to.
So you meet in Minnesota, Fairville County courthouse?
No, the Eagle Center in Lakota.
You're gonna meet at the Eagles Center, they're coming down?
They, they booked that, yeah.
Yeah, we, we discussed, we wanted to have something that was, that was closer for the, that was closest
For the landowners.
And then
Talked to.
Difference between the two counts.
Yeah, we talked about Lakota or Elmore, and they decided on Lakota, so that's what we got, I guess, if anyone's got questions or want more information.
They haven't appointed their three viewers yet, or.
No, they, they have not.
That's a long ways down the process.
Yeah, they, they, because they have not yet received a petition, they, and that, that's what I say is the, they're wondering, does this one, if this is turned into them, does this count? Or not, do they have to, would, would they have to receive one from a landlord, or would they themselves have to put one in, they already have this report from their county drainage department, right?
And and that's where, based on the discussion and conversation that could happen at this meeting, maybe we'll find someone that is willing to do that on the Minnesota side, I mean.
Last time we had an issue with Minnesota, we had to have them filed in Minnesota and Iowa before they were happy.
Right, and so then that's, yeah, that, that's why we're going to this meeting to let people know that
The process.
Come up again.
What's potentially.
And and the Drainage Department is now recognizing the the issue, and would like to see something done, but yeah, we're, from their procedures, um, they're, they are a ways off yet from the the viewers, um, they don't.
They have to have a vote of the district whether to approve it before they appoint the viewers, that's what they did last time.
With that, right.
Well, I think, I think that's all on their commissioners, they to make that decision.
They uh.
I think it has anything to do with the landowners.
Yeah, they have to have a certain percentage that wanna go along with the project, they do things a lot different.
Well, that's, yeah, that's for the improvement side, I don't know if that's the same for repair, but that's, that's where, there's a lot of, there's a lot of beginning stage type conversations that we are having, and that's, that's the basis of the.
So are you talking about doing a repair?
We're talking about figuring out what path forward works, and landowners on our side that I have communicated with are not in favor of a repair, unless it's done on both sides, and even at that, it would be the last ditch effort, so to speak, I mean, they know, they know the line needs attention, but they much rather do an improvement while we are already doing the work.
Well, do a repair, you can't change the grade or the elevation of anything, so what would be the object of it is?
You could change the elevation.
You, you could, well, and you could change its, you could change its uh, horizontal positioning if that gained you cover.
Alignment, yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could change the alignment so long as your capacity.
Wouldn't change.
Wouldn't change. And you can go, you can go deeper, so long as your, again, your capacity isn't.
And that's where.
Now, in this instance, with what depth or lack thereof, you'd be looking more at a horizontal
Line.
Alignment change, uh, but that would, that would bring the line back to its original intended capacity, and hopefully get rid of the line that's causing holes.
And and based on our conversations on the improvement side, I know for the other projects, we typically talk anywhere from half inch to three quarters to a one inch coefficient. They said if we went above, they said half inch was fairly standard for improvement projects there, but if we went above that, it would get increasingly difficult the higher we went, so.
Well, your child will be on top of the ground again.
That, that for nothing else, but the, the regulatory from their standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were talking more technical and regulatory things on that side, when you get down to would it actually be feasible to even build, that's, that's another topic, but we're not quite to that stage.
You want Marge to come to this meeting, or how, who, who do you want to attend the meeting?
Well, I'll, I'll attend it for sure, Tyler and, I guess it's up to anyone else if they want to or not, I don't think we would need minutes or any of that formally taken, it's more of a discussion and kind of working out beginning topics, I guess, I don't, you have any other way to lay that out, Tyler?
No, um, I mean, I would certainly be taking notes on anything that that happened, it may not be the worst to have a record of it having happened.
We need a record, because we're spending, we're spending drainage district money.
Right, yeah, so having that is, I, I.
We can't have that.
I think without a question, you need something in the minutes of it having occurred.
So are you willing to take the minutes and do that? To put it into the official record?
I can, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Certainly.
Then that's what would have to be in the motion.
Oh, do you have that?
That is February sixteenth.
Okay, perfect.
I don't know what in, what time they actually settled on, have they said that in the, the notice?
I'll have to.
That, and that date was, was chosen based on when they thought their drainage attorney was going to be
Available.
Available. But.
I don't remember, I don't remember if he sent that in email or if he did.
I think they.
Marge gonna send letters out to the landowner?
Uh, that's how I understand it, right?
I would need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but yes.
Be kind of handy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's.
I have not, I have not been included, I don't think I've been included on any notice, information.
I was looking for it before it came in.
Somebody in February. Get that February sixteenth at one thirty P M in the Eagle Center in Lakota.
So would that be your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second to his motion?
For an informational meeting.
Thank it.
Thank you, Mike Carter, any more discussion? Put it in uh, motion that uh old man Mick will take minutes and they will be put in the record.
Yep, that's fine by me.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Folks, motion carried unanimously. You're here for D D four eleven?
Uh, no, I pick the rest, I pick the rest of that's uh, without me, so, otherwise. Again, I don't have a good.
Yeah.
Don't leave.
What's that?
Don't leave, you know? We got D D four eleven. Yep. Trying to read it. We have a change order in here for D D four, lab eleven. Any questions on the change order? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Have motion and a second to approve change order on D D four lab eleven. There's no more questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I pose motion carried unanimously.
Nexus pay app for four eleven?
Lot of work. Uh. Next, we have a pay app for D D four lab eleven. In your folders, anybody have any questions on the pay app?
So what, what does this mean? What they.
Pay.
So this is a um during, during the course of large projects that are engineered like this.
Yeah.
They can do um, pay requests on a, at the most, at a monthly basis, they don't always happen on a monthly basis, but they can request on a monthly basis, payment for the work that's been completed, so this is, this is showing, it outlines and you guys wouldn't have seen the first one, I don't remember when we approved the first one, but it would have been before the end of the year, but this is this is basically a progress report for the work that's been completed, and so like line seven, you'll see there's a retainage, we retain ten percent until of the work that's been completed until the end, that's paid after the completion hearing is accepted.
Okay.
Um, it shows change orders, it shows the original contract, change orders, what the revised contract is. Uh, you can go down the lines and see that we're completed, and then under the front signature page, it's a little harder to read with it being sideways here, but it, it goes through the items that were bid on and shows how much of that was completed, so you can.
And then if you look right here, so it shows this period, yep, and that's the amount that you're requesting for this, right, right for this payout.
Okay. Yeah, so it's just, just a snapshot in time from the last payment to.
That is a fair time we've had these.
Yep, yep.
Good, 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 good question. Yeah, if you can see the previous payment was twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, yeah, fifteen, and.
Yep. And this here is that makes. We're assuming that everything's done on the project now, because all that's left is the retain.
Retained.
Of ten percent, so that just gives us where we're at.
Okay, yep.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the payout.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, say aye. Hearing now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried. Next. We got change order one, D D sixty sub one. Zach?
So I'll, I'll highlight the couple of things here. There's a T in, on there for televising, which was discussed when we were going through the bid letting with the plastic and all that. There's another T for connecting into the old main, which they it was not, not really included in the plans that way. Because Iisman had requested keeping the old mains. We had to hook into that. Then there is trench stabilization.
Real quick, so the T for the camera, that's just like a T section in the pipe that has the pipe that goes up so you can lower it.
Yeah, so there's, there's.
Take intake whatever.
Well, and it'll, it'll be capped once they're done with that, which I believe that's already capped and kind of covered up and all buttoned up. Um, the other T would, it's same concept. It's a T, but that one will tie into the old main, so it'll be, it's laid more horizontal instead of vertical.
Oh.
It's, it's the same, same piece of product, so to speak, but it's a different use.
Still a little bit differently.
Yep, so that's, that's why they're separated out a little bit. Then the trench stabilization rock, they there was quite a bit of conversations about the manufacturer specifications for how the pipe would be installed. And when this was bid, that was one of the specifications is over a certain depth, it would need to be bedded in rock. So there's rock that has been used, but in addition to what was planned originally, so this includes.
I think they run into some soils that didn't.
There was, there was very. And I, I know there's, Zach has taken some pictures. I've taken pictures when I've been up there. The engineers have taken pictures, but I mean, there's, there's stuff that was running like sand.
Yeah, it was just unforeseen things until you get down there, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the change order. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post motion carried. Next, we are up two. Approve pay at three for D D sixty sub one. Pay at number three.
Yep, so this would be similar to the one on for lot eleven, kind of a progress snapshot. Um, this has the amount due as forty seven and a half thousand, shows previous payments and stuff, so.
And that includes that change order?
Yep, it does. That's shown on the left side.
Any other questions on? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Spector, do I have second? Play it. Which one?
Carter.
Carter.
Carter. I'll, I'll, I'll look at you next time.
Have a motion and a second. Is any more discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried unanimously. And we have a drainage district repair request. And it was Kyle's, if I remember.
I don't think so.
No, no.
It's yours.
Is it mine?
Really, I mean.
Huh. I thought I read Kyle's name on.
I, I did. I rece, I received a call and I filled out the request, but it's, it's just south of my district by a mile.
That's why I've seen your name.
Yep.
No, that's fine. Oh.
Yeah, so Steve had, Steve had called me about a fever dam out there, so.
You know how deep it is?
No idea. I have not looked at it.
Yeah, I'll go out and look at it, decide who could do it. If we need a long stick or.
I think it's, I think it's fairly close to the road, so, but I'm.
Well, let's first the road, I did.
Yeah, I'm not sure how deep the ditch is there. So yeah, you'll have to check it out.
Yeah, see, see what we need for equipment.
Right.
So I'll get that to you, Mark. Do I have a motion for the supervisor, do their drainage repair request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by what, sir?
I'll say. I'll say.
Spector. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried. Discussion with the county auditor.
Hey, um, first thing I wanna talk about is I applied for a ten, or ten hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, it's called L A T C F grant. It's local assistance and tribal consistency fund, and it's part of, uh, American Rescue Plan. Not only certain counties were eligible and Kasuth County was one of them. Um, part will receive it in two trench, like we did our fifty thousand dollars each. Um, we, I have not heard anything back yet if we were approved or not, um, but I'm assuming we will be because they've already told us we're eligible, so pretty much we just had to apply for.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just waiting to get word back and, and when we will receive the purchase.
Oh, does that kind of fall under the ARPA funds or is that separate?
It'll be separate than our.
Okay.
But it'll be, it's pretty much, um, kind of on the same lines. It can be used for any government.
Yeah, when, when Kobe was going through the eligible uses and I got that in an email which forwarded to Tammy, there's a wide range of things we can do with it. I mean, we could use it a thousand different ways, so it's just a thousand dollars.
Yeah, true, so.
Oh, since that's separate from ARPA, would there need to be a different commission to handle the?
No, you don't have to set up. We didn't have to set up one for ARPA either. I just wanted to do that because to help take the burden off of me because I have too much other stuff to do that.
So you would handle the requests on this new one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's kind of
That was.
One, one thing of a hundred thousand, they just find a place to use it up.
Yep.
I would say, I don't think we should break it out by ten different things or anything, just find a, find a place.
More?
The number of the security going upstairs, it might be a good place to put it because it's, um, twenty five hundred dollars for eight doors. And then they want some of the glass doors replaced. So that might be something to look at spending it for, just an idea. So I, Derek and I are gonna get together and talk about that, which I'm, he's gonna put some numbers together. Maybe that would be a good place to start since we know we need to do something with security out there.
Right, yep.
That's, that's just an idea.
Yep. Another question while we're talking about security, um, anybody looked at putting more signs up going up the stairs yet or?
Um, no, I just need to know what you want them to say and where you want them.
So I think, do, I mean, do we need to have an agenda?
No.
For it or?
No, I can make those decisions on my own.
Okay.
So, but if you guys have ideas, let me know.
I would suggest, um, both entrances. So that way it gives people a chance that, you know, if they're walking in, they know they're gonna go to the third floor. They see that sign, they could turn around, go back to their car. And, you know, put it away.
Talking like on the doors, on the.
On the doors, yeah, yep.
But they know guns on the third floor.
Yeah, weapons prohibited on third floor.
I'll give more, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that include pocket knives?
Well, um, I believe it's clarified i- i- if a knife is over six inches, it's considered a weapon. So a pocket knife is probably not. But yeah, if it's a hunting knife or something like that, obviously that can be considered a weapon.
A- at the end of the day, if people have question, I mean, you're not gonna put all that detail.
No, no.
So at the end of the day, if people have questions, it's, they're gonna have to ask someone, I guess. It's either someone on this floor or they go upstairs and be like, what's allowed here? But it's not something you're gonna put on a sign either way.
And then I would say.
One down the stairway, weren't you?
Yeah, I suggested one by the stairs here.
Yep, that's what I was gonna say too.
I guess.
Well, so you know where you go up the stairs and you turn left to keep going upstairs? Slap it on that wall right there. You know, there's nothing else on that wall, so.
I, I wouldn't put it up there. I'd put it on the second floor here. So before you start up the stairs to the third.
Well, in my.
Cause you're all turning.
Right to your right here.
Yeah, as you, as you turn the corner, you look at the wall as you're going upstairs. It would be, it would be visible on the wall just to the west.
Could we, how I was, could we duplicate just to cover that basis?
It depends how much do they cost. I mean, I don't need to be spending a lot of money on signs.
Sufficient, I, I wouldn't put another one on the landing with one down here. I, I would say the entrances plus a final reminder as you go upstairs because
I, yeah.
Once you get, once you get up the stairs, you're kind of in the middle of the second and third floor, so it's.
But technically you're not on the third floor yet. The reason I was saying that was because there's nothing on that wall there. So having a sign like that would definitely stand out and you get up to that second floor, you're turning left regardless, so that wall's right in front of your face. So that's why I was just kind of suggesting it, but that's fine if you guys want to do it on the landing here on the second.
I mean, you'll be, you'll be turning here regardless either, so I just, it'd be, it'd be earlier. It'd be one less
Yep.
Half flight of stairs to go up.
And if you miss the sign at the door. Oh.
Yeah, I would, I would say just right here, bottom of the stairs.
I would agree with that.
So you're gonna use those funds for the science crew?
Yeah. I was also coming out of my courthouse.
Okay.
Budget. Um.
I would think it'd be just vinyl for the doors.
Um, Ron and Willie will do whatever they usually do. I leave that up to them, what they. No. No, no, no.
A single piece of paper out of print.
Just make sure they use stencils.
Now, they, they have stuff that they use for all the windows and stuff, so I'll let them take care of that.
Yeah, shouldn't.
Um.
Shouldn't be too complicated.
And then, um, I sent you an email, I think a week or two ago, uh, President's Day is February twentieth, so courthouse is closed except for our office because of the election on March seventh, we are by state law ordered to be open the twentieth of February. So my office does not get President's Day off and we have to be open until five o'clock that day. So although the courthouse will be closed, technically it will be open, so people can still come to it. So, um, just so you're aware of that. Working on budgets, um, it's really hard to get everything done in as small a amount of time. I know it put a lot of pressure on the department heads. I still don't have worksheets back from some of them with their wages. So I guess they'll be bringing them to you today without a building because they haven't given them to me yet. So we'll kind of just work through it and see what happens. Um, and that's all I got.
Heard, um, I had a care connections meeting last Tuesday afternoon, uh, in Evansburg and I, I thought I had my paper, but I did not, but, uh, from what I remember, um, they're still in the process of constructing the facility over there in Spencer, um, for a twenty three hour crisis uh, intervention center and, uh, in conjunction with the hospital there. Um, and it had been, been doing a lot of good things with that even already, just serving the mental health of, of North Iowa. I had a call last week from lady that needed to talk to supervisor and that's what it was in regards to and, and, um, was able to get her the help she needed through, through that. So it's good to make those connections and meet the board and, and and do that. So I was, I was, uh, with all the meetings I had.
John? I had a couple.
Yeah, you had a lot of meetings.
Yeah, um, well, the first one was the Kasuth Economic Development. We kind of went over some of the results from the the study that was done. Um, just kind of reviewed that and discussed some different things about different industries that we can kind of recruit into our area. Um, there was some discussion about with cities having to do some stuff with their, their pipe testing. The, you know, it all kind of came down from the Flint, Michigan thing where, you know, they have to go in and, and test all the, the pipes for lead, things like that. Wasn't quite sure how that all kind of fell under the economic development, but there was just some discussion on that.
It was just a status update.
Yeah, yep. So, and then the E M A, uh, Commission Med and kind of briefly went over the budget, approved the budget and then, uh, just kind of had some other discussion about other future things, um, not much to talk about there. And then the E nine one one meeting right after that. Um, there's radios that were handed out for, I can't remember the exact term that they, they called it. Um, but it had to do with like for emergency notifications and things like that. And they're talking about, you know, getting those for the schools and things like that as well. Um, they were also discussing the it's a kind of hard to explain. But it basically uses the ability to use video on your phone when you call nine one one. That you can allow the, the phone to do video back to the dispatch. There's some discussion on implementing that, um. I think that was the major topics. We also went over the budget for E nine one one and approved that. So, yeah.
Brian?
Um, EMS meeting last week. Well, some spills here. I don't know if he wants to hit any highlights, but obviously the bylaws, we already talked on. There was a bit of discussion about the agreement with the hospital and, um, Bill and I had a conversation with Dar Friday afternoon. And she, she remained steadfast that they don't have money available for EMS and they are very cons, their board is very concerned that that's double dipping in the tax dollars. Um, they said they've talked to their attorney about that. I asked if they talked to the Attorney General or anything like that and they had not, but um, at the end of the day, that will be an impact to the planned budget, so we will have to try and do things a little more creatively to maintain the level of service and do it cheaper, which obviously good to do anyway. Otherwise, that's probably the main points there. Anything else? Jump out to you, Phil. Okay. Um, then Friday morning, C I J D C meeting, um, there, oh, there was a long meeting for the first one of the year since there's several new board members. We explained things substantially in depth on quite a few things. One, one issue we're running into is D R I is disability rights of Iowa. They get their powers from federal legislation, but it's a state thing. And they come in and basically limit how we handle the juveniles that are there and what punishments, so to speak, can be used or how they can be handled. And it makes it very difficult for our staff, which is one of the reasons we are doing this new building. The timeline on that has been pushed out to March now and there's potentials that might not even be done by then, but we are going to look into. There's potentials that might not even be done by then, but we are going to look into. Have conversations with our attorney to see if there's anything we can do to. Be a little more aggressive on the timeline, because it was supposed to be done already, so. Um, there's that, the next meeting we will have. Proposed twenty eighty changes and bylaw changes. Um, most of that is, let's see here. Let to the actual pages. So on the, on the twenty eighty, it has, um. Language under appointments to the commission that each county shall appoint. A county supervisor as commission member and alternate at their annual meeting, and there, Tony had shared that there's. A number of counties that only appoint the delegate, and then they have the rest of the board as alternate, but they don't. Formally appoint them, so to speak, it's just if the delegate can't go, they send someone else. So we talked about changing that to may appoint an alternate, because. I mean, Tony said he kind of gets to the point of, he's trying to police his bosses, so it, it just. We, we opened up, or we talked about opening up a little bit of flexibility in that regard. Then, there was a little bit of clarification as far as. That same topic on the bylaws, and then there was talk about the executive committee, so we added, added some things there, and. Made some clarifications, but all good changes, I would say, so. That sums up that one.
I had a granny meeting last Wednesday, uh, we got four Senate final bills. But pipeline, that flies to us all the way from. Requires them to tell who's investing in it, and another one says it's gonna take the right of eminent domain away from. The I U B and put it underneath the hands of. Legislatures, and, uh, another one is they have to have ninety percent of the landlords. Sign up for it before they go through that farm bureaus.
For eminent domain, yeah.
Before they can use eminent domain.
Yeah.
Uh, we added a new county, Story County, uh, so far their financials look. Good, they're right on track for being halfway through the year. Uh, standard.
Added Story as a member now.
Yeah, and annual meeting went well, I didn't get to attend. Uh. Not so new or interesting. Except. Old engineer is deviating into all counties to create repairs. Um. Spencer.
Etler, Don Etler.
Yeah, yeah, Don is.
He likes to mess and everything.
I couldn't spit it out right away.
Yeah, so, that's all I have, uh, next week.
If there's anything.
Jack's not gonna be here yet next week. He will be, are you gonna be here?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Next week, it's seven?
Yes, yeah, I don't have anything on the agenda for yet, next week yet, but that will change.
Um, one thing, just quick discussion point, don't keep, or, keep too much time, but. Uh, then I have a couple people approach me about if budget sessions could be recorded for the public, being it is public as well.
We never had before.
I, I realize that. I, I was asked, and I said I would bring it up. Um.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, being it is how we are spending the public's money, I'm not opposed to it. Is that something we could look into, or, or, or no, I guess, that's.
And I was, I mean, I was. I had that on my mind when we were getting started with this, and then I forgot to do it, the first budget one we had until partway through, so then I was like, well. Start in the middle, then you got criticism from both sides, so I had not at that point, but I don't see any issue with it.
I don't know what everyone's thoughts are on that. I had said I would, I was bringing it up, I was not sure how that was handled.
You talk about wages, you want that? But the end number is public number, but is there an issue in the discussion parts?
So.
If you're talking about competency of people.
That was my, that was my biggest.
That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I had thought about that too, at the end of the day. If someone walked in while we were having budget workshop, we can't close the door and tell them to go out, so. It's, it's not a closed session, if there is things that we were evaluating the competency of an employee. They could request a closed session for that. But yeah, I did, I did have that same thought.
Cause of court.
Yeah.
But.
Is, is that something? We need to have a go down it?
Is that something that you?
I believe you can't hold on, because it wasn't on yet.
That's what I, I, I know, I know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
And.
But in the, in the future.
In, in all reality, it might be something better to plan for next year. To look ahead, because we'd have more time to plan that appropriately, I mean, if we, we go through all the stuff today. And then all of a sudden you have one recording of our budget discussions.
Uh, is it fair to the presenters not to know that they're going to be recorded in their discussion? That's one of the best, that's kind of asking your opinion, if they know they're gonna be.
Well, I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide anything. For today, for today, no, but if we give them enough notice, and the, the budget meetings are gonna start being recorded, then. Obviously, they'll have.
Discussions we can have in the coming year, yeah, yeah. It would, it would probably be easier, easier to plan going forward than starting midstream like this.
Yeah, so as far as today, probably not. We can put it on the agenda for.
Next year.
Next year, yeah.
Well, I mean.
Well, a little sooner, you know, maybe we could, maybe we could discuss that in like October or something. We could put that on like.
December?
Hmm, probably. I'll save her, because if we start having, well, maybe.
Oh, because sometimes we have budget stuff come up in November, so maybe we just do it at the end of October and have. That decided before going.
It, it would probably be better to have a decision on that, like midsummer or earlier, that way, if anyone does want to have a. Conversation about their employment or whatever, that way, it would give them ample time to get on the agenda in that regard.
But so what am I hearing today, we gotta get started.
Yeah, I'll sit here, we're running his time. Yep. So.
I, I don't, I, I think it would reflect poorly to start that midstream for this year.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm just bringing, I just brought it up.
But I, I definitely don't want the public to think we're hiding anything, because they are open meetings, so.
About August first, put it on the agenda for August first? I'll be gone.
You will be gone?
Yeah.
You already know going?
I do.
How about that?
It will be in Milwaukee, uh.
He's gonna be drinking beer in Milwaukee.
Following week?
Following week I'll be here. August eight. Better than stone.
Just got done writing it, didn't you?
Come on.
I'm fine whatever we do, I don't care, just so we're consistent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When we get in troubles, when we're not consistent, right? So who's the first one?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Yep, no, we're gonna charge you for that.
Okay.
Deduct your pay.
Be on the agenda.
So which one you got, ambulance?
I put ambulance, Sandy and me both down.
Okay.
I didn't know if we had questions on any or not, so I thought I put it down in case somebody did.
Well, are we gonna put them two budgets together? No?